I'd like to say good evening and welcome to the Columbus Municipal School District's Board of Trustees meeting. Today is December 12th, 2022. It's approximately 6 o'clock. This meeting is officially called to order. We do have a quorum established this evening. We do have Mr. Frederick Sparks to my right, Dr. Jo- Joe Schumake, and to my left we have Dr. Cynthia Brown and Mrs. Talisa Young and myself, Yvonne Cox. Along with our interim superintendent, Mr. Dennis Dupree, and our attorney, Mr. Chris Hemphill, and our board, I would say she's our right hand, Mrs. Velma Woodard. Yay! Since this is our last board meeting before our holidays, I would like to say Merry Christmas and Happy New Years to all of you and your families. May this time of the year be truly a blessing to you. And now we would like to, we'll offer the invocation, Dr. Brown.
Please bow your heads. Dear Father, we ask your blessings upon the students. Give them a desire to learn. We ask your blessings upon the teachers. Give them a passion for teaching. We ask your blessings upon the staff. Give them a heart for serving others. We ask your blessings upon the administrators. Give them wise and discerning minds. And finally, we ask your blessings upon this school board. Grant us patience and understanding. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag, of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now we'll move to item three, the adoption of our agenda, policy BBB, policy BCBD. At this time, I would like to make a motion that we adjust our agenda to address the consent agenda item number six. Board of you will refer to that item with me, please. Item number six, if this item will be moved to, and we'll move up item number seven and the remaining, and this item will become item 12. Because we will address it, we'll do all the other consent agenda items together, but this item we will discuss and approve for discussion separately. Requesting a motion.
So move.
The motion is made by Mrs. Young, request the second by Mr. Sparks. Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Thank you. The second motion that I would like to make at this time is to add item number 13 to our agenda, discussion of the audit findings. Whereas the board will approve or to review for approval if we're doing a formal exits conference or not. For a formal exit conference or not. Excuse me?
Okay.
We're adding this item. This item is added number 13. It becomes item number 13. No ma'am, it is not on the consent agenda. Roman number 13? Let's make it Roman number 13. I'm following you. Roman number 13, and that would be before we adjourn. Again, I'm requesting a motion for discussion and approval regarding our audit findings that the board selects that we do not want a formal exit conference or request a formal exit conference. This will become item number 13 before we adjourn this evening. Requesting a motion for approval. I made the motion, I'm sorry. Woo, too many words. The motion is made, requesting a second. Second by Dr. Brown, thank you. Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you all very much for those little adjustments. We'll move on to item number four, which is the school faculty and staff recognition. Mr. Dennis Dupree. Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Did we formally adopt the agenda after those amendments? I didn't.
So we can go back informal? No, we had that.
You made the two additions.
And now we need to go back and do a formal adoption.
The agenda as amended.
So now we're going back to number three, doing a formal agenda, to adopt the agenda as amended.
That's correct.
So move.
Okay, the motion is made by Mr. Sparks, requesting a second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Young, any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Thank you all very much. Now we can move to item number four, which is the school faculty and staff recognition. Mr. Dennis Dupree.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. Mr. Little, are you here? Thank you, sir. I'm gonna come down front so we can recognize these two individuals and give them their certificates.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening.
CMSD is, we're always proud of employees that further their training and education. It's important to be teachable by continuing to learn even in areas of expertise. The field is always changing, new techniques. This is James Williams. This is Chris Richardson of the Maintenance Department. Think they're to be commended for earning their certificates in the HVAC electricity. We're proud of them for what they went through and would like to give these certificates to them.
On behalf of the board, the Columbus Municipal School District, we thank you guys. We are grateful.
Stand up. All right, thank you. That's all right. Wow, we're very grateful and excited and happy about all the growth that we make here in the Columbus Municipal School District. Because it says so many great things are yet in store for us. Mr. Dupree?
Okay. At this time, and I got to tell us a little story before I introduce the world famous cheerleaders. My son sent me a video of some cheerleaders cheering. And I said, where are those young ladies from? And he said, Dad, those are your cheerleaders. And I want to commend you ladies. I mean, you did a fantastic job. I mean, you were right on beat, and I thought you created the actual cheer. And I was in a meeting and one of the leadership team members said, Mr. Dupree, that's a TikTok. But I'm not familiar with all that stuff and how you do it. But ladies, we are so proud of you and what you have done. Now, we're gonna give you a little something. It won't be tonight, but we appreciate you so much. You put us on the map. So, we have the, I know we have the cheerleader sponsor here, so I know she wants to say a few words about her squad. If you would stand up, please. Where are you? All right, there you go.
And the co-chair is there too.
And the co-chair, if you, anybody that's with your group, adults, if you want to stand and come up front, that's fine. Why don't you tell us a little bit about your squad and who they are? Yeah? That'll be fine. They can introduce themselves. I like young people to speak up and talk for themselves if that's possible.
All right, I am Ashley Hill. I'm the coach of my wonderful squad, the Columbus Middle School Cheerleaders, and each will come up and introduce theirselves. First, we have Asia Lewis.
Hey, I'm Ashley Lewis, and I'm in the eighth grade, and I'm 13.
Hey, I'm Mallory Stock, and I'm in the eighth grade.
All right.
Hey, I'm Madison Murray, and I'm in the eighth grade.
I'm a kidsy, and I'm in the eighth grade.
Hi, I'm Phyllis Smith, and I'm in the eighth grade.
Hey, I'm Isabella Dumson, I'm in the seventh grade.
Hey, I'm Gabrielle Shepherd, I'm in the seventh grade.
I'm Tamaya Bawa, I'm in eighth grade.
Hi, my name is Makaien Danner, and I'm up in the seventh grade.
Hey, my name is Jemai Berg, and I'm in the seventh grade.
All right.
Hey, I'm Larissa Ham, and I'm in the seventh grade.
Hi, my name is Jamie Coleman, and I'm in the eighth grade.
Hi, my name is Kalia Sterling, and I'm in the eighth grade.
My name is Ross Doris. I'm in the seventh grade.
Now my girls will perform a cheer, the same cheer that they went viral on. Also, I have my assistants, my backbone, Carolyn Richardson.
Thank you.
Again, we want to thank you for all that you do for the school system. And I could not tell you were the same young ladies that got up and said what your names were. You were so quiet when you were speaking. And then you have these big voices. Thank you so much for all that you do.
Yes, sir.
We do want to invite everybody that they are on the board's end of the day to get approved to go to Atlanta, Georgia, to participate in a national competition that they got invited to based on this cheer. So we do want to invite everybody to join them, to come to Atlanta, and anyway that we can.
Oh, that's great. Oh, wow.
And thank the parents that are coming also. I know we don't normally get a crowd this big, so we know we got some parents in audience.
Their parents in the audience and friends, oh man. I won't say anything about old memories, because they would be really, really old. But that was great. Thank you all. Wow, that is awesome. And for sure, we will support. The board will support in any way that we can, individually as well. And you all are at leave to be dismissed if you would like to at this time. Ma'am?
Back to normal.
We back to normal. Boy.
Did you hear how clear they were? That was clear.
Anna sent me the video. I said, so who is that, Anna? Don't tell anybody. That's the cheerleaders.
Don't let nobody else know we recognized.
That's a good way to start out Christmas holiday. See that? Made us nationally well-known. Okay. We'll, okay, we'll move on to item five. If we will, please. Move on to item five, consideration to approve our minutes. I'm requesting a motion to approve November 1, November 9, and November 14 minutes at this time. The motion is made by Mr. Sparks, requesting a second.
Second.
Second by Dr. Schumake, any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Thank you. Moving on, number one, trust. Be trustee district review, the trustee travel. The Board of Trustees, we were fortunate. I believe all of us attended the Fall Leadership Conference, Mississippi School Board Association's Fall Leadership Conference, which was November the 14th and the 15th. Board, would you all like to share anything? From our conference? We'll start over on this side. Ms. Young is smiling.
I'll start. We all attended several sessions. There's one in particular that I'd like to highlight, and I won't be long. The one is Leadership Matters, and Leadership Matters and Dare to Lead. She highlighted, this was by Dr. Carla Evers, and she highlighted some very good things that we can use in our roles as leaders on the board. And one of the things that she, well, several of the things she talks about, anyone who's responsible, making sure that you are finding the way to be responsible at all times. Making sure that we're vulnerable to lead, making sure we're adding values to the board. Looking at those top three values, things like commitment, excellence, and responsibility. Being brave enough to trust others, but having boundaries and accountability, as well as reliability. Also, learning to manage and develop those crucial leadership skills and having goals, knowing our values and what we mean to the board, how we are an asset, and how we hold ourselves accountable. I'll just highlight one of them instead of all of them, because I know y'all have some to share.
Dr. Brown?
I enjoyed the session as well. The most interesting part to me was the parliamentary procedures that we used to vote for the officers. It was my first time to participate, and it was very good. I enjoyed it, learned a little bit, a lot. And of course, the session was a group session opposed to breakout sessions this time. So we were all in there together, and it was just a great collaborative culture there to see all of the other board members that are there and so dedicated, that have been there such a long time. And it is a desire of mine to be there a long time and just enjoy and benefit the district, the community, the teachers, the staff, the administrators, as well as this board. Of course, they talk about school safety, and that's always an important issue for me right now. I'm really concerned about our children and their safety and what we can do to support the safety of our children. And I could go on and on, but I'll stop and let Mr. Sparks talk a little bit, because he's smiling at me.
All right, that's great.
Well, one of the things that really stuck out to me in this particular conference is we got a visit from Lieutenant Governor Holsman. And he spoke to the matter saying that Mississippi was more secure financially than we've ever been before as a state. He also elaborated on incentives that are being given to districts that are starting to look at and consider the modified calendar. Also, Dr. Cochran spoke about the importance of communicating, and he said, as a leader, you're prepared to communicate. Great leaders aren't caught, well, great leaders don't get caught up in their emotions. And great leaders put themselves in positions to lift other people. He spoke extensively about the importance of communication and making sure that you convey the message that you intend. There's a lot of other great nuggets that were given, and I guess I'll just pass the book to Dr. Schumake.
Well, my first choice to talk about was parliamentary procedure. My backup was the Lieutenant Governor. My backup to that backup was the speaking about the hog head in the refrigerator that Dr. Noel Cochran spoke about. I won't go into that. All right, let me see. Okay. Ms. Cox, do you know who you're gonna talk about, so I won't take yours away?
That's okay.
Okay. No, that wasn't fair. Okay. I also enjoyed Corey Uselton, who's the superintendent at the DeSoto County Schools, which is a huge district. I think it's maybe the lar-
Thirty thousand?
Yeah, it's one of the largest, if not the largest, in the state. And I think it was interesting what he discussed, which for a district that size is absolutely essential. It's essential for any district. But the DeSoto County School District, because it's so large, really has to focus on communication. And not just communication with the community, which is absolutely essential, but also within the school district itself. And he gave, I think, some pretty good tips on things that can be done so that communication flows in the way it's supposed to. Because as we all know, if you've got different people relaying different messages, it can be damaging for the school in a lot of different ways, especially if there's something, well, on the more benign side, it just confuses people. But if you have, and he did give some examples of emergencies, it can be damaging for the school. The one I remember, I think, was about when you make the call to close school for weather. Because you don't want to get parents there too early. You want to get them there when they need to. And that's a huge responsibility for a superintendent and his staff to come up with exactly how to relay that to the public and make sure it gets out where it needs to get out. So I did enjoy that one, and I think it's something that every school district down there probably learned a little bit more about how to do it in a way that is useful. Thank you.
Oh, that's great. All right, let me see, can I find something? I'm flipping around in my notes.
We took them all from you.
You know, Marshall Ramsey, remember that one? Marshall Ramsey, the artist, and his presentation, he embedded so many different pieces of his artwork in what he was presenting to us. And basically, he was saying, teacher memories. Teachers push, they want, he said, teachers should push themselves. You can't do better. The first person to believe in you is actually who? You. And I'll jump back from that one, and one other thing that I noticed, I think this was at the very- And I'll jump back from that one, and one other thing that I noticed, I think this was at the very beginning of the conference. Uh, was speaking to board members where it says, creating a unique district is creating the culture of the district. And you know, we always talk about culture and climate, it's one of my favorite words. But, um, the board's culture, it, you know, they talked about us establishing what our role is and building the culture of the Columbus Municipal School District. When they're speaking, I'm looking at it and listening as if they're talking directly to me on how I can improve myself and self-evaluate what I'm doing as a board member. And, um, it says, build leadership capacity. Lead, leaders are, are also followers. Don't always be the one that's speaking all the time. It says, listen, listen, learn to listen. Each board member has a turn. So we listen to each other, and I say respectfully, listen to each other, because then we will eventually all be saying what? The same thing, and we'll be in sync. That's what I took from that, uh, first part. I believe it was that very first day when we were like running down there to get there. But thank you all so very much for all of your input, and, uh, I can say that our district was recognized. What was that, Dr. Schumake? The, uh, we were recognized for, uh, our petition, our participation, uh, as a district in the, um, Mississippi School Board Association's, all of their professional development trainings. And I think we were like in the top. It's outstanding merits, I believe. And we did receive a plaque that Ms. Woodard has already posted for us, and the board had a picture with it. And, uh, we're trying to get that picture so we can share it with others. Okay, the Board of Merit Award, that's what it is, the Board of Merit Award. And the Columbus Municipal School District had one hundred and sixty-six point seven five. So the board has been really working to support our district and giving of our services to, uh, the community, as well as, as always, to the district, our children, our parents, and our, all of the employees that are working with us. Thank you. We'll move right on now to, uh, item number two, discussion and consideration of capital improvement plans for the Columbus Municipal School District. And this time, I, I said, Mr. Chapman and Mr. Little, just in case Mr. Chapman and Mr. Little both elaborate, so I don't.
Good evening again.
Good evening. Good evening.
Uh, we've turned in several reports to you, and you've had time to look at them, and we're just seeing if there are any questions on anything that we've turned in.
Would you all have any questions on the capital improvement project, the first one? Additional campus improvement, the maintenance for November to December? Routine maintenance? Do you have any, uh, questions or comments? I do appreciate you continuously updating the chart that you do have for us. I really do. It gives us a very good, uh, clear picture as to where we are. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Maybe I'm moving too fast.
So number three will be the next one. Number three is the one that you were speaking on.
Yes, sir. Okay, we'll move on to number three, discussion of the Hunt Campus Recovery. Ms. Chapman, right?
Yes, um, good evening to everyone.
Good evening.
Mr. Taylor said he could not be here today, but he did leave some updates, um, when he came to the Hunt Community School. Uh, he said the project has been in FEMA mitigation for the last two months, but has, but was released, officially released as of last night. So he did want to update, update us with that. Uh, currently, the project is in the insurance department reviewing the final insurance settlement. This process should only take two weeks. Uh, after the insurance review, the project will go through a final review and then to MEMA for their review and approval. And all reviews should be complete by early of next year, and the money will be obligated at that time. So, he said, could not make it this meeting, but hopefully he'll make the next one.
Did he say anything about when early next year?
No, he did not.
So we'll look at it as being early as possible next year. Okay, thank you very much. Oh, excuse me, Mr. Chapman.
Yes, sir, just one quick question. Um, so it was released from FEMA last night, then it goes through a final insurance review, which should only take two weeks, according to Mr. Chapman. Now, the, the release from FEMA was only supposed to take, uh, well, it was about, it's, it got stuck there twice as long. Do you know if Mr., um, Mr. Gill is gonna be following up? If it doesn't, if it crosses that two-week line?
We'll check to make sure that, we'll, I'll ask him to make sure that he checks.
Because, um, I don't, I don't think any tribe dropped the ball. It's just that the standard time for that release from FEMA went twice as long as it should've.
Okay, I'll follow up with that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Rogers. All right, thank you. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number four, contract renewal updates. Board, do you have any questions or comments regarding the contract renewal update? Moving on to item five, FYI, the annual summary of policies reviewed. This is a very good report. Thank you very much. It was giving me something to, uh, use in checking my policy update binder. Uh, board, do you all have any questions, comments? Thank you all very much. We appreciate that. Moving on to item number six, consideration and a discussion to approve changing the regular scheduled meeting date of Monday, February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, to Thursday, February sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, at six o'clock. This is changing, uh, a, requesting a motion to, uh, approve. Motion is made by Mrs. Young, requesting a second.
Second.
Second by Dr. Brown, any discussion? Mrs., uh, Dr. Schumake?
Uh, I was just curious why?
I had requested it for personal reasons.
Yes, 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 I forgot. Thank you.
Oh, that's okay. Any other discussion? If no other discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you very much, board. Moving on to item C, the goal updates, policy BA, student attendance report. Board, do you have any questions, concerns regarding the student attendant report? Dr. Schumake?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, yea, we're back in the, everything went up from, uh, from October. So I think that's a, a good move, because we were not so good in October with all the flu, so let's keep our fingers crossed for, for more flu outbreaks.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Moving on to item number two, school safety report. Uh, the student discipline report. Board, do you have any comments regarding the discipline reports for each school district and the district as a whole? Board? I don't have any, but the reports are very thorough. Thank you very much. Moving on to number three, the dropout report, any questions or comments? I do appreciate how thorough these reports are when we're reading them. And number four, the safety report. Moving on to number five, uh, Mr. Dupree's update and reports. The first item is, uh, the Columbus Municipal School District improved letter and certificate. Would you like to speak on that, Mr. Dupree?
Well, basically, letter coming from the state interim superintendent on our district, um, approving from a letter D to a C. Now, we have been doing, um, we went out to Cook, um, last month and spoke with the teachers and staff about, um, improving the way that they did. And we will be reaching out this week to all of those schools who will be receiving those incentives. We didn't do a really big, big celebration, and I'll tell you why, because we, we did move from a D to a C, and we're very proud of that. But that's not where we want to be. And so we have, I've spoken with principals, all elementary principals have been given a charge to be no less than a B. Uh, and other schools have been given also marching orders on where we should be. So we will be celebrating, uh, even if I had to come back to celebrate with you next year on the improvement that we're gonna make, that you're gonna see. So, uh, our staff and our, and our principals and all know how proud we are of them for making progress. But we didn't want to overly do it. I think sometime we can, can get complacent if we reach out too much. So we wanted to give them a taste of what the board is proud of, and we're proud of them from central office, of all of our staff and, and students who approve. But at the same time, we wanted to make sure they understand there's a higher goal than, than where we are now.
All right, thank you. Any, uh, questions or comments? Board? Okay, we'll move on to item B, safe and orderly schools. Mr. Craig Chapman. Hello again. Good evening.
So I do want to talk to you a little bit about the safe and orderly schools. I did have some copies. I know this was denied.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
So with the safe and orderly school, this was sponsored by the, by Mass Mississippi Association for School Superintendents. And with the support of Mississippi Safe and Orderly Schools. And this took place October twenty-fifth, on a Tuesday. They also had three, they had three different meetings, but we chose to go to the one in Oxford, uh, because it was closer. And the, the meeting location of that meeting was at the University of Mississippi, timed from eight to five P.M. And the people in attendance was myself, Ms. Mary, my public relations officer, as well as Chief, Chief Brown, and Mr. Peterson from the high school. And so the purpose of the meeting, it was a tabletop exercise in response to the recent active shooting events that have been taking place around the country. But also, uh, especially in our public schools, as well as the swatting that took place in October, because a lot of districts experienced the swatting that took place around the country. So it was a time for them to meet to discuss just how schools are set up and the, the procedures they are following. Uh, and this was an opportunity for us to listen to the Department of the Homeland Security, the FBI, Mississippi Department of Education, the Rankin County Sheriff Department, as well as FEMA. For the morning session, we had a tabletop exercise, training session, and this was carried out by, uh, Mississippi Department of Education, Safe and Orderly School, as well as the FBI. And during the active shooter, um, exercise, they just talked about some of the experiences the FBI had gone through as far as working with different schools that have been part of these active, active shooting events. And just exactly what schools should do to make sure that they are in compliance and ready when something happens in their schools. And of course, they did discuss that you just, as long as you have your plans in place and you're actively following those plans, then, um, you can be only, be ready as only as your plan is set. So, um, again, it talked, they discussed the recent events in Evolvey, as well as the swatting around the country. We also talked about the family reunification center, which in our plans are called the relocation sites. And this was discussed by the Mississippi Department of Homeland Security. And for the reunification centers, the relocation sites, they gave us an opportunity to go back to look at our relocation sites. They gave us some guidelines to look at, for example, um, do you have a relocation site that will, um, that will cause other people to be in harm? Because if you have a, uh, a threat against a district, uh, do you have a relocation site in a location where other children or other personnel may be, uh, affected by this threat? And so it gave us an opportunity to go back and look at our, our, um, crisis management plans, and I would discuss our next steps as far as reviewing those plans that we've already started taking. In the practical training session, uh, it was discussed the command post training, and this was led by the FBI. And for the command post training, it just talks about what are the responsibility of the personnel that are in the command post. And these will be our superintendent, will be Mr. Dupree, as well as our chief of police, sheriff, chief of CMSD, uh, emergency plan management director. And it depends on which other officers we call, these would be the people in the, um, command post, listening to all the information that is taking place. Now, outside of the command post, they also share some other committees that each district should have, and we've also taken a lot of that, taken that into, um, consideration as we've gone through our plans and make sure that we put those in place, that we have those active plans working. So, uh, we are prepared for a situation that may take place in one of our schools. The media training, which is one that we were, uh, happy to have our public relations director present, one of the only districts who have a public relation, I think it was two, and we was one of them. And so it was good to have her, uh, present to learn just how important it is for her, kind of like what you talked about with the DeSoto County School District, having someone who can communicate the information to parents about, in enough time where everyone would know exactly what's going on. It talked about the JIT committee, which is something that our public relations director will have to spearhead to make sure that every media outlet that's present will get the same information. And they're not getting information secondhand or someone saying, this is taking place when it's not, but you have someone in place who can give them the correct information. Where are we as a district? Each of our schools, as well as the district office, we have crisis management plans in place, uh, with required information suggested by the FBI, the Mississippi Safe and Orderly Schools. School conducts emergency plans, emergency drills monthly according to the requirements set by the State and Orderly Schools. Uh, and you see a list of the, the drills that are required by each school each month or semester. Schools are required to run metal detectors a minimum of three times per week. Schools notify the chief of all emergencies that may take place in their building. Chief Brown and Officer Burris will complete a CPI restraint and exclusion training in January, followed by training of all of our school officers. This is one of the requirements in the Mississippi School of Safe and Orderly Schools, is for your SSO and SRO to be trained in one of their recommended, um, uh, restraint trainers. And CPI is supported by Mississippi Safe and Orderly Schools. Visitor control procedures, all schools and school offices have controlled entrances for visitors. So of course, all of our schools, you have to buzz in before you go in. So our next step is to make necessary adjustments to all crisis management plans with correct terminology and language. Create forms and cards for the unification site, reunification sites, and develop a district reunification, reunification site team. And a reunification site team, the reason why we want to create a district reunification site team is because we know if something happened in a school, a lot of times, those personnel are gonna be busy trying to support students to make sure everything's in place. So by having a district reunification site team, we're pulling people from other buildings who can go to those sites to support those teachers to make sure that those students are getting where they need to be. Uh, discuss reunification sites with principals based on information shared at the Mass workshop manual and in the manual. Develop district emergency-wide flow chart and update everyone on their responsibilities. Our next meeting is Thursday, December the fifteenth, to finalize all updates. And spring, we would like to have a community-wide meeting with our alliance team, the emergency team, so they'll understand where we are with our plans. We know our schools understand. They know the procedures. They go over the procedures with their staff. But what we took away from this workshop is making sure that we, the community understands our plans and what the procedures are. And so that's our next step. And Chief Brown and I are also looking at ways to improve safety. We've also had a chance to speak with one of the vendors from the event, um, which I think they spoke with over the summer. They had a chance to go through the training. Uh, and this vendor is from Alabama. I can't remember the name exactly, but, um, we've had a conference with him, and we are looking at, uh, another way we can help get that information to our administrators, uh, a lot sooner, uh, while they're in the building, so they'll be able to, uh, disseminate that information to all the, um, emergency personnel who may need to be aware of it. So we are looking at that to make sure that we can improve in another area, providing safe and orderly schools. So we are looking at that to make sure that we can improve in another area of providing safe and orderly schools for our students. Any questions for me?
Very good report. Thank you very much. Uh, Board members, do you all have any questions, comments?
Um, and I may have missed this, but have y'all had an opportunity to, to have a meeting with the sheriff, the chief of police, fire department?
No, that's part of the, um, alliance and community team that we would like to meet with.
Oh, okay.
As early as part of, uh, next semester, so they can, now I've met with, um, the emergency management director, Cindy Lawrence. I've met with her, I met with her in, um, in July, August. But, um, I would like to, and she has the plans and she understands, but I, we would like to have those emergency management personnel to look through the plans with us so they can maybe understand why some of the schools have the information they have written in those plans.
Well, that was my second question, who, who comprises the community alliance? So it's the law enforcement, the, uh, E M A?
Right.
That group, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. Really appreciate your outline, too. It gives us very good details for future references. Thank you. I appreciate it. Mr. Chapman? This is so funny. Find my place. Alright, we're at principal updates now. Principal updates. Columbus Middle School Principal, Mrs. Williams. Good evening. How are you?
Good evening. Ms. Dupree, um, I'd like to start on that first page. Of course, we bring greetings from Columbus Middle School, and I am exceptionally proud of our cheerleaders. And what I do want you to know about our cheerleaders are they are student leaders as well. Um, they lead with their chairs and they, they are leaders around our building as well. I hold them to high esteem. Uh, we meet often, um, on how to be student leaders. That's the same accountability that I hold for all of my student athletes. So I do wanna commend them. They are doing an outstanding job of representing the school, but more than cheerleaders, they are student leaders. So job well done for our cheerleaders. And I was very proud, I was a very proud principal of them tonight. Um, our, nothing has actually changed with our goals, our overall, um, my goal for the school, as well as our benchmark. We are completing our, um, now we's assessment at this time. We're doing makeups this week. So I will have some new data to report to you all, um, next month on the school updates on the data. Our total enrollment is six sixty-four. Our student A D A, but this is for the month of November. Our student, um, A D A was ninety percent. Our students with two or more chronic absence for that month was twenty-nine percent. Our teacher attendance rate was slightly up, and that's a good thing, um, as the flu season is passing us on by, up to eighty percent. Our discipline referrals, however, they did spike up to forty-seven percent, to forty-seven is, um, from October of being twenty-two. A lot of that, again, is attributed to, um, the subs in the building, the non-familiarity with the, uh, students. Um, and then even with our testing, the students in the classrooms for a very long time, those little middle school become agitated with one another, but we are definitely following our tier plan, making sure that we meet with those students and provide the necessary interventions so that we do not have fight number two. Alright, with our, uh, describe how the school is addressing areas of challenge presented by the data above and areas that's caused me to be in the school improvement. Uh, we strategically recently, um, met with, um, J C, as well as Mrs. Wilson on how we're gonna set up our testing, um, for our building, um, as well as for this now we's test, as well as for the spring, uh, to ensure a school that large that testers don't have testing fatigue, uh, to make sure that we're planning now on how to test those students, um, in different groups to make sure that, um, the testing environment is conducive to students who can show growth. So that was one of the meetings. We've also, um, recently met with, uh, Ms. Terrell Smith and, um, with the curriculum team to, uh, look at adopting high quality, um, material by way of E L A. We were looking at my perspective. We still are looking at, um, adopting high quality, um, material for E L A. As far as our safety plan, we did have a meeting, um, recently with Chief Brown, uh, to restructure and realign our, um, positions for our S S O and our S R O. So I was very delighted to, uh, share in that meeting with Chief Brown. She did an excellent job in, uh, making sure that there was a healthy partnership between understanding the roles and the responsibility to S S O and the S R O in our school buildings. Um, also, we have been approved at Columbus Middle School, Mr. Dupree, for, um, a lead teacher, um, to help in the area of curriculum. Um, and it's much needed at Columbus Middle School, a lead teacher. So, um, we, we probably will extend the, um, application time. Right now, teachers are already under contract. So, um, it's a peculiar time to be looking for a, um, teacher leader, but right now I do have five applicants. So I'm gonna continue, uh, to make sure that our next move is our best move. So we're gonna really, um, take our time with hiring to make sure that that person really meets the need, uh, the needs of Columbus Middle School. So, um, but I am very appreciative of finally being able to hire a, a lead teacher. Uh, Ms. Holly has worked those budgets and those books for me to make sure that we're in compliance. And this is a position that we can sustain over time. Um, other things that has happened for us at C M S, I did have opportunity last week to go to a training in Meridian. It was, um, managing your staff well. Um, that was very insightful. I had opportunity to meet with other middle school principals around, um, Mississippi. We talked about scheduling, we talked about, uh, data, we talked about curriculum. So I'm gonna stay in contact with them as they had a wealth to share. Different demographics, same different graphics, they're still students. So it was just awesome to meet with those, um, other administrators from around the state. Some of those schools were As and some of those schools were Fs. It was just great to collaborate with other middle school, um, administrators. Also, um, also, we are finishing up our now we's test, as I stated earlier, so we'll be able to have those reports. Our curriculum coaches, what the district is doing to support me, they're doing everything. Um, as, if I call Mr. Little to tell him, they're, the alarm is beeping, he's calling somebody immediately. Um, if I call anybody on the administrative staff for the, um, for the district side, everyone is very, very helpful. Um, we are already setting dates for our second semester for our, um, data coaching and our external providers to, um, continue to come into the classroom to make sure that our teachers are teaching on grade level, are teaching with the rigor. Um, so that is working well for us at Columbus Middle School. Our balance is the same. We'll have an updated balance, um, in January for our twelfth month, which is now for the twelfth month. Uh, we'll get that balance for you all in January. Are there any questions for me?
Board, do you have any questions? Dr. Schumate?
Um, yeah. How is the early release working for the staff? This is the Wednesday once a month. How is, how is that going?
So during that time, we set aside for M T S S, uh, whether we are catching up on paperwork, whether we are discovering new students who, who is added to our tier process. So we're utilizing that time, uh, we're making the best of that time. So it's great for Columbus Middle School because our eighth grade population, uh, we really need that time for our eighth graders.
Good, good. I'm, I'm glad that's an innovation that seems to be working.
Yes, ma'am. It is working for Columbus Middle School. Great M T S S time.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That is good to hear, too. Board members, you have anybody? Anybody else? Everybody's fine. Thank you very much, Mrs. Williams. We appreciate your presentations always.
If you all don't have anything to do, this Friday, we are having, ma'am.
What is it? Go on.
We, I'm sorry, this Friday.
What is next Friday?
This Friday, we are having our, um, dinner theater. Um, it's killing time. It will be at six o'clock. Our doors will open at five forty-five. Um, our admission is twenty dollars. This is for Mrs. Patty. We always have a, a dinner theater every year, and I'm just super, super proud of the work that Ms. Patty puts into her students and grooming them. Um, I'm telling you, when I see my, one of the perks of being a middle school principal is you see them in their academic area, you know? But when you get to see them in athletics, or you get to see them in their drama, or you get to see them in their chorus, they just come alive. You, you can't even see the same personality, like similar to what Mr. Dupree said about those cheerleaders when they were introducing themselves.
Yes.
They have this personality, but when it's their time to shine, they turn into great little performers under Ms. Patty, uh, great little athletes under our coaches, uh, great band members. So that's a perk of being at the middle school to see these students really coming into their own. So if you all don't have anything to do, we love seeing you Friday.
So this is Friday. At what time?
The doors open at five forty-five. Twenty dollars, and Ms. Patty desperately needs to know.
Twenty dollars?
Yes, ma'am, twenty dollars interest fee. And Ms. Patty desperately needs to know by tomorrow if you are able to attend.
I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah, she said you already purchased your ticket.
Mm-hmm. And by the way, I thought that the, um, performance that the, the, um, students did, the, the little, the band, the sixth graders?
Yes.
They only had those instruments, I understand, for like two and a half months? They did a phenomenal job.
Yes, ma'am. To see those students in the performing arts, it is just really amazing to see how they evolved throughout the year.
Mm-hmm. So congratulations on that.
Thank you. You can call to the school on tomorrow. Yes, ma'am, and we'll make sure that we reserve one for you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate it. So Board members, um, along with the numerous things that, uh, Coach Davis has given us in, in our weekly printout, this is included in there, so let's please keep all of this into consideration and try our best to attend and participate with our students for all extracurricular activities, as many as we can. This sounds, um, this is great. I don't know, I'm just happy that, uh, our extracurricular, as well as our athletics, everybody, all of our children are happy. And when kids are happy, then you see the progression. You'll see the movement. And I'm looking forward to those scores during, just what Mr. Dupree has already predicted, that we will be celebrating next year big time. Right, Mr. Dupree?
Yeah, we putting our best foot forward, that's for sure.
That's great to know, I'm glad. Alright, we're moving right along. It's something coming every month, giving a review of your school and where you are and, you know, all these little bits and pieces. So let's be as supportive as we can. Now we'll move on to our special programs. Mrs., uh, Valerie Bailey, uh, special education, gifted and five oh four services.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Ms. Bailey. How you doing? Thank you.
Just wanted to give you a little update, um, dealing with, um, special education departments, Columbus School District, Together We Fly, with the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, um, which is I D E A of two thousand and four, fiscal year twenty-three, project application and, uh, part B and preschool funds. Projected, uh, fiscal year twenty-three I D E A and preschool allocations for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. I D E A was at, um, one million sixty-seven dollars, one million sixty-seven thousand, three hundred sixty dollars. Uh, for preschool, it was at forty thousand, six hundred sixty-one dollars, and the total allocation was one million, one hundred eight thousand, twenty-one dollars. For the twenty-two, twenty-three preliminary, we have I D E A at, um, one million sixty-three thousand, six hundred seventy-nine. It did increase just a little bit. Um, and then we have preschool at, well, it decreased just a little bit, I'm sorry. We have preschool at forty-two thousand, five hundred twenty-five. It increased a little bit. And the total allocations is one million, one hundred six thousand, two hundred and four, which was a little bit of a decrease in the total allocation. We have thirteen disability categories, um, autism, intellectual disability, multiple disabilities, traumatic brain injury, other health impairment, orthopedic impairment, language speech, deaf, blindness, emotional disability, hearing impairments, specific learning disability, and visual impairment. Those are the thirteen disability categories that, um, we have under special education that rules a child eligible for special education. I D E A part B and preschool funds, special education and related services, these are all of the different, um, parts that we fund, the different people that we fund. Um, and I'm not gonna go over all of them, but you have them, they are in your report. Um, these are the people that are within my office and als- also on the outskirts, out in the school building sites, residential treatments, um, all different kind of stuff that we fund. Some of the things you'll notice up there is like physical and occupational therapy, speech therapy. We provide evaluations from our psychologists. We have homebound services. We provide, uh, residential and day treatment services. We have, uh, psychologists, psychometrists, speech therapists, all kind of people within our department. I D E A part B and preschool funds, this is just a chart of the money, the funds that we spend out throughout the year, just the percentages. The largest percentage we spend out, we fund is salaries at forty-five percent. Um, the next thing is our employee benefits at twenty percent, and then it just starts trickling down to other areas that we fund. M A E P funds, we have forty-six teacher units throughout the district, forty-one certified special education teachers, five, um, speech language pathologists, and five hundred and six students. And that's all I have for you today. Anyone with any questions, concerns?
Board, do you all have any questions? Any comments that you'd like to make?
How many gifted, um, teachers do we have?
Three.
Now, gifted does not really fall upon the spade. It falls upon the genie yet. So you have three gifted teachers. How many students?
In all, there's between sixty-five and seventy-three.
So it was only three units given for gifted?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, out of our three thousand?
And they're, they're split up through, uh, from the elementary schools and the middle school. We don't have any gifted kids at the high school level.
No.
No.
So this would be two through six, or have you added eight?
We've added eight.
So we go through eighth grade?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Because statewide, you go two through six, unless the district selects it in your proposal. So right now, we're serving two through eight.
Eighth grade, yes, ma'am.
Okay. And we have sixty-seven students?
Yes, ma'am. It's sixty-three to seventy-five students. We're testing some, so that's where that seventy-five is coming in at. There were sixty-three, we have sixty-three that are already in the gifted program, but we tested some more, so we could be up to seventy-five. We're waiting on those test scores.
Do we still have a, a gifted, what was she, a coordinator?
Coordinator, yes, ma'am. We do. Ms. Ms. Roland?
Is this a, um, an increase in our gifted numbers or a decrease?
An increase.
And we're, are the students no longer tested at the beginning of the year?
They're being, yes, we have some that are tested at the beginning. We've had some that were, um, that really tested all year round. We have some that are being tested now. So as Ms. Roland, um, is out in the buildings, and she's getting those test score, those are, she sends those reports in, and the psychometrist tests them.
So are we benefiting from having the eighth grade and gifted? How many students do we serve in the eighth grade?
At C M S in all, they're twenty-seven.
I guess I'm.
So I don't have them broken down.
Okay.
Because like I said, gifted doesn't really fall under me. It falls upon the genie yet.
Really?
Mm-hmm. We don't, spade does not fall gifted at all.
Yes, I understand that, but I thought that the department was for special education, gifted and five oh four.
Yes, but, um, when it comes to gifted, it's like my, I don't have anything to do with gifted, Ms. Roland does gifted and she rolls it through, um, my psych- my psychometrist tests them, but we don't go out and have any.
So through the State Department, are you saying that Ms. Roland is the only contact person to M D E?
Well, I haven't had any contact with M D E with giftedness.
Okay.
With the gifted kids. She schedules all of their, um, professional developments, those, uh, conferences that she goes through and all of that, she does that.
Okay, so it's totally split.
Yeah, and to be honest, five oh four needs to be, at some point, we, we talked about this a little bit, five oh four actually need to be split from Special Ed also, at some point.
But you know, it's to my understanding, now, correct me, um, Ms. Rogers, uh, in previous years, uh, the Special Services Department has always encompassed Special Education Gifted and 504 Services. Whereas, um, that's why we had a need for, uh, I'll say, a director as well as a, an assistant, Special Education Director, as well as the case managers and all the other positions that are in this department, was because the department was for SPED, gifted and 504. That way, the director had the leeway to direct all three programs. So things have changed.
Now, you're correct in what you just said, historically, that's how the Columbus Municipal School District has ran the Special Education Department. It encompassed all three.
Yeah.
Okay.
But if you allow me to make a statement.
Yes, sir.
And I try to put things in perspective, five oh four is general education, so we need to start looking at, how do we pull that from Special Ed and still service the individuals who need a five oh four plan?
Okay.
It's really not, that really need to be separate from Special Ed. It really needs to be.
Revamp that program.
So we're looking at that.
From all them different positions.
Right, we've been, we've been looking at how, how do we do that.
Yeah, okay, if the program has changed like that, uh, more than likely when we do our budget hearings again, let's please take this under this, uh, discussion. You know, regardless, the board members, please be reminded to take this under discussion. I'm sorry to hear that. Yes ma'am.
Thank you. Could you speak a little bit on the psychology interns, there are two in your department?
Yes ma'am, Ms., um, I have two interns from Mississippi State that helps out with our psychologist department, we do not have a lic- a licensed psych- psychologist that is, um, well, our licensed psychologist is contracted and she's only here at, on an as need basis, which is usually about two to three days out of the month, depending on our caseload. So we hired in, well, we contracted in, two Mississippi State interns to help out, they are licensed psychometrists, so they can do what our psychometrist does, but they work up under, they're in the process of, of receiving their, um, psychologist license. So they work up under their psychologist at Mississippi State and our contracted psychologist to do some of the work that our psychologist does when she's not in the district.
So that's, that's working pretty well then?
Yes.
Good, thank you.
My psychometrist. No, not with the gifted testing, no ma'am, no ma'am, they don't, they can do the gifted testing, but they don't, my, um, my psych- my psychometrist, ma'am. She does all the gifted testing. Now, if Dr. Kraft is in the district, she'll help her out, especially during the springtime, when they're testing. But she hasn't been in the district much during the fall, so my psychometrist. She does. Right, she does the behavior and the E M D testing. Yes ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
Good evening. Okay, Consolidated Federal Programs Application Funding Projects for twenty-two, twenty-three, is what I'll discuss with you tonight. The first, the second slide is just an overview of all the different areas under the different funded programs that we serve, uh, the different positions and things that we fund. Salaries, uh, Title I salaries, nurses, interventionists and so on, I won't, uh, bore you with that, you'll have that.
Do you have the clicker, Ms. Cornwall, so you can click the, um, yeah, click that for us.
Okay, the third slide, um, gives you an overview of the percentages of funds liquidated in F Y twenty and F Y twenty-one. Uh, those were the two periods that we had to make sure we obligated all funds by September thirtieth and, uh, liquidate by this month. With the F Y twenty-one funding, um, the state, Mississippi Department of Education did extend that. All funds were obligated for all districts, they do have until Sep-, um, September, we were able to do revisions in the districts who had obligated funds that didn't get off the books because maybe you had, um, back orders that didn't come in, or you had things that were out of stock because of supply chain. So they did extend that, for our district, you can see, um, we, the F Y twenty, twenty funds, they're all obligated and liquidated. For the F Y twenty-one, we do have some funds that we will be able, about four thousand eight hundred dollars, that we did not spend, and as you can see, um, those funds, we got ninety percent, ninety-nine point nine-nine percent that for, when you look at three million and something dollars and you got four thousand left, it still leaves you like point zero 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 one percent not spent. But we will be able to spend that money, they're going to allow us to do revisions on those funds that were obligated and were not, um, liquidated. So, right now for F Y twenty-two, you can see that we're really doing well uh, with the help of leadership, especially, uh, Ms. Wilson, working with the principals, supporting those new teachers in the district. Lot of P D, a lot of, a lot of good things going on to support those teachers. So, um, here you see that sixty-six percent, but she's already done, most of that's already spent, it's just not off because she's getting ready to prepare for P D for second semester with teachers within the schools. So pretty much, that's probably about ninety percent done when she gets all of that, all of her requisitions and approval on everything for the support that she's providing for the schools coming in January, February, March. So hopefully this year, as of April first and June thirtieth, well, even prior to that point, our F Y twenty-two funding will be gone. I'm hoping most of that will be spent within the next two months and we're chunking away at the F Y twenty-three. And that's a peculiar thing because this year, and that's because of all the ESER funding and all of the nineteen money, the twenty money, the twenty-one money, the ESER money, M D E is running behind as well. On our F Y twenty-three, um, application, we have approval, preliminary approval. All districts were approved, they wanted those districts to be able to, um, pay their salaries and all, so there were portions of the application that we had to get done and then there are portions that every district, we have to come back and make revisions and complete. We got a preliminary approval and then we'll get a final approval. So in January, we will be resp- we, um, doing those revisions on the F Y twenty-three and get a final approval and you'll have my signature page to approve for M caps next month. Um, but our district, we're spending the money, you know, we have lots of salaries in F Y twenty-three funding and we've got to make sure we get that down to eighty-five percent before June thirtieth. So we're watching that, monitoring that to ensure that, um, we get those funds spent. The fourth slide is a comparison of the F Y twenty-two, twenty-three allocations, well, that, F Y twenty-three would be, will be preliminary allocations and you can see the, um, what we were funded in twenty-one, I mean, twenty-two versus twenty-three. And for most of those, with the exception of Title II, um, we, Title II is the only one that decreased a slight bit. Um, I am appreciative of Mr. Dupree and the board for approving assistance for me in my office. You know, being the E L coordinator, the homeless liaison, the, um, migrant liaison, the, uh, foster care liaison, I, I did need that help and I'm appreciative of that. Um, even though the equitable services funding is included in allocations, I poured it out so you can see what the various schools, what funds they are receiving, um, for this year. Uh-oh, I'm sorry, I didn't put the F Y twenty-two line in there, that's a mistake. But, um, they are getting a slight bit more because of the enrollment of the students, um, at Heritage and Annunciation. Last year, Annunciation had, um, six students for Title I and this year they had fourteen. And as you can also see, the Assembly and Jesus Christ Academy located in West Point, that serves students from our district, three thousand dollars, uh, will be going, uh, as an M O U to that district. Um, our per pupil allocation for F Y twenty-two, twenty-three, slightly, uh, lower, but I think that, you know, considering what we thought, we were really thinking it would be lower. As we know, um, the funding for the schools, we did take some salaries out, put them in ESER, which helped. We did, we did move some money from Title Four and Title Two into Title One to support those salaries and those teachers with the increase in salaries that we had and, um, which increased the budget, uh, salaries in the budget. So, um, the enrollment for these applications are always dependent upon the seventh month enrollment. So the enrollment data that you see for F Y twenty-two, uh, would be March, uh, uh, for F Y twenty-two, three thousand three hundred and twenty-two, and for March twenty-twenty-three, three thousand sixty-six. Now, they did allow us in twenty-two to use our twenty-one data from the pandemic, they let us use those numbers for multiple years. So you were technically using F Y twenty-three enrollment data from F Y twenty. So our enrollment is, has declined, um, but those numbers that you see on the F Y twenty-two are numbers that they allowed us to use for three years, for twenty and twenty-one and twenty-two, which helped us in terms of our allocations. As we've discussed in previous meetings, um, the L E A planning team will work as a team to look at those salaries that had, that have been put into ESER funding and, you know, we're going to work as hard as we can to look at, um, licenses, and Mr. Dupree has, is doing early, um, sending out those intent forms so we can kind of try to prepare for that early and as many of those people, physicians as possible, who were put into ESER from Title Funds. Um, and Dr. Page assists Holly and the other team with the ESER, so I won't get into that, that's another night uh, for, for you to get information on that. But I, I will say that the SO one funds, ninety-eight point nine nine eight of those funds have been spent as well. I think, um, we had, um, about two point eight million dollars and we got like three thousand some dollars, um, to spend. And I think they sent out a late liquidation on that today, which might allow them to re-obligate those funds as well, but that's a whole different ballpark. Um, any questions for me?
Dr. Schumate.
I, I appreciate the Consolidated Federal Program application information about what the titles are because I'm not an expert and this is a big help, so thank you very much, I'm going to keep that so I can reference it.
Thank you very much. It is, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Brown, did you have something, you fine?
Okay, we're going to move on to, uh, item six, Open Forum Policy, B C B D. Um, do we have anyone here for Open Forum tonight? Nope. So we're moving on to item seven, Office of the Entrance Superintendent, Mr. Dupree Special, I mean, School Operations, the goal, which is Goal One, and you have any comments on that one?
I don't have any travel, we, I don't, I'm not sure, Ms. Wood, did we cancel the meeting for Wednesday or not yet? We did do that? Okay, so we're going to hold on, we probably just keep it and, and we got some things discussed with the Superintendent's Roundtable. But other than that, I don't have any travel. And it's very helpful when we have a meeting, uh, like this before the Superintendent's Roundtable because we discuss in those meetings, some of the things, some of the proceedings that happen in this meeting, so we can keep the community informed of what's going on. Uh, but I don't have anything else.
Moving on to number B, Superintendent Recommendations. I'm requesting a motion at this time to approve our staff and personnel items.
So move.
The motion is made by Mr. Sparks, requesting a second. Second, second by Mrs. Young, any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous, thank you. Moving on to number two, consideration and a discussion to approve the twenty-twenty-one Teacher Incentive Payout based upon policy G B R E B, requesting a motion for approval.
So move.
The motion is made by Mr. Sparks, requesting a second.
Second.
Second by Dr. Schumate, any discussion?
I'm sorry.
Yes ma'am.
But what, I have a relative and this is dealing with the all teachers.
Need to recuse, yes ma'am.
I'll just step outside this door.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. She's refusing, she's recusing on B. Oh, two, okay.
Let's see.
It does.
I thought this only applied to four people, am I misreading this, it doesn't apply? Right, yes ma'am. It's only two, wasn't one of those?
Well, yeah.
It was just four people. You don't have a relative among those four, do you?
No, not.
Oh, okay.
The motion is made by Mr. Sparks, second by Dr. Schumate, any other discussion? The motion is made by Mr. Sparks, second by Dr. Schumate, any other discussion? If no other discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand, it's unanimous, thank you. Moving on to item number eight, Office of the Business Management, Ms. Holly Rogers is seeking approval for the board to approve, consideration to approve our monthly financials, which is policy D I. Board, I'm requesting that we look at the number one through nine, that is the fund balance report, cash balance report, budget status, monthly revenue, monthly expenditure, certification and summary of reconciliation.
monthly expenditure, certification and summary of reconciled bank statements, budget amendments, claim dockets, and fixed assets. Requesting a motion for approval.
So move.
The motion is made by Mrs. Young, requesting a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sparks, any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous, thank you. Moving on to item B, FYI, Office of Business Management, the update. Our monthly ad valorem tax collection analysis report. Board, do you have any comments concerning this report? Really, I'm looking forward to seeing from, through December. This is through November. And I'm sure during January's meeting, we'll see through December's. So we'll be able to get a better grip of it. The fund balance trends, the bank cash balance yearly comparisons, student activity report, federal programs and IDEA monthly financial reviews. You have any questions, comments concerning these reports before we move on? Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, I just wanted to thank Mr. Davis for including the theater activities under student activity report. I think that's the first time that's been done, right? Maybe if I missed it last month, I'm sorry. But I think that's great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Schumate, for your acknowledgements, I appreciate it. Moving on to our consent agenda, policy BL, B, oh, I'm sorry, BCBL. I'm requesting a motion to approve consideration and a discussion to approve agreements, contracts, memorandum of understandings, out-of-state travel, field trips, and student transfers. This would include number one, two, three, four, five. And then we'll move down to number six is the amendment for Mr. Shivers becomes number six. Then number seven, eight, nine, ten, and eleven. Eleven would be ending with the cheerleader squad, out-of-state overnight travel. Okay? Requesting a motion for approval of all these items, that's a total of eleven items.
Ms. Cox, let me clarify, what are you taking out?
We're taking out number six.
Number six.
Resolutions authorizing the participation of the State of Mississippi Master Lease Purchase Program.
Thank you.
Okay. Requesting a motion to approve.
So move.
The motion is made by Mr. Sparks. Question, a second.
Second.
Second by Dr. Brown. Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. That's four. All not in favor, please raise your right hand, one. The motion passes. Moving on to number twelve. Item number six became item number twelve. And we're looking at item number twelve now. It states the resolution authorizing the participation in the State of Mississippi Master Lease Purchase Program and Series 2022 B Participation User Agreement. There are two different agreements here, Ms. Rogers would like to explain them.
The board has the discretion to choose either a seven-year or a ten-year agreement. Either one of them would allow a buyout after three years. If you choose a seven-year, the interest rate we received is four-point-eight percent. The ten-year is at four-point-nine-two percent. Going forward, if you choose the seven-year, that is one hundred, two thousand, eighty-two dollars and twenty-two cents a year. Overall, after that seven years, the district will have paid out seven hundred, fourteen thousand, five hundred, seventy-five dollars and forty cents. If you select the ten-year, that's thirty-eight thousand, three hundred, ninety dollars semi-annually. I'm sorry, the first payment was semi-annually as well. But the total for the ten-year is seventy-six thousand, seven hundred, eighty-one dollars and thirty-four cents. After ten years, the district will have paid out seven hundred, sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred, thirteen dollars and forty cents, which is fifty-three thousand, two hundred, thirty-eight dollars more if you, if you look at it long-term. The board has the discretion to choose whichever yearly amount you want to go with. If you want to go with the seven-year at four-point-eight percent or the ten-year at four-point-nine-two percent. But I do make the recommendation that the board, if you approve one tonight, that you approve it with a cap of a five percent interest. Because this interest rate is only good on the day of the market sale. So the day of the market, whichever day we enter into this agreement, we go with that day. The interest rates have been dipping, high and low. Last week, I think they were a little bit higher than they are this week. At that time, I think they were a little bit lower than they were last week. I know that that committee is meeting again on Friday. I don't know if the rates will increase or not. But it is based on the current value of the day in that market.
Okay.
And if it does come back and it's five, it's more than five percent, I would recommend that we go into competitive bidding.
So, Mr. Humphrey, I want to word this, requesting this motion properly.
Yes, ma'am, let me get, when the agenda, when we adopted it, we had not moved item six to number twelve at that point, had we?
Yes. Yes, sir.
So that was one of the items that we renumbered then?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
It was number twelve.
Okay, all right, that's what I've got, that's all I need clarification for.
Number six is number twelve. You gonna add some comments on the wording?
So the motion would be to approve item number twelve, the resolution. And y'all have got to decide.
The resolution up to seven years with four-point-eight percent interest capped at five percent.
So you want to do?
That's the first motion.
So you want the seven-year option? That's what we're looking at?
I'm starting with the first one.
It's, it's either one.
Right.
This box is correct, it's two different options.
Okay. So do we make the motion, then second, and then go into discussion about it? Or discuss it before?
I think you can discuss this before.
Discuss it before? Okay. Okay. The item is up for discussion before the motion is requested. Any comments that you'd like to make? Anyone regarding the seven-year or the ten-year?
You did state the seven-year is one hundred and two thousand, Ms. Holly.
It's one hundred, two thousand, eighty-two dollars and twenty cents per year. It'll be just like our regular master lease. We have two payments, fifty-one thousand per year. That one was based on ten years, we received ten buses at that time. But it's two payments during the year of fifty-one thousand, forty-one dollars and ten cents.
Ms. Holly, do you have a recommendation as to which works better for the district, cash flow-wise?
Cash flow-wise, no. Because we're looking at a difference of thirteen thousand dollars a year in payments, or it's twenty-six thousand.
Neither one of us hurt, neither one hurts us.
Neither one of them would hurt our district at this time. And with either option, after three years, we have the option to buy it out. So if we've gained momentum in our fund balance after these federal program projects get underway, that's with our ESER funds and our FEMA construction. I would like to keep money available in our district to pay for those because we have to pay for those upfront. But for this right here, it really doesn't matter in the grand scheme of our budget.
And it's probably better to get things paid for more quickly if we can.
I do appreciate that. And I appreciate the lower interest rate. It's not lower by much, but it's lower. But, and that's also why I'm requesting that no matter which one the board goes with, it is a five percent cap.
Okay.
So what I'm hearing is your best recommendation is the seven-year. Is that what you want to get to, Ms. Cox?
One other question.
Yeah, I was sort of running with it before we discussed it.
Where are we on disposing of those other buses?
When are we disposing of them?
Oh, where are we on it? I know we, I think we voted on it, right?
You did vote on it, I think that they've scrapped it.
They've scrapped them, right now they're using some of the, they're working with some of the ones they can as far as saving use for some other parts of the buses. So they have already out scrapped those buses. I know it seems like there's a lot that are still out there maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
I was like, where are we gonna park them?
Right, so they're using some of those, taking some of the parts that they, that they can reuse to help fix some of the other buses. But they have moved some of those buses off. And they're continuing to move.
So Ms. Cox, if the board is, meets with their approval, it would be a motion to adopt the resolution for the seven-year option with a five percent interest cap.
Yes. Question, the motion?
So move.
Motion is made by Mr. Sparks, requesting a second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Young, any other discussion? If no other discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous, thank you. Okay. We're gonna move on to item. We're looking at our dates to remember. Our dates to remember. We're looking at the dates to remember, which would be our academics, athletics. Our holidays are coming up, that's a good break. Dr. King's birthday. And other board meetings that we have scheduled. You have any comments, board, concerning any of the dates to remember? If no other comments, we'll move on to item number ten, requesting a motion for close determination of executive session policy, BCBK.
So move.
Motion is made by Mr. Sparks. Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. We are in a close determination for executive session, I'll be out in a moment. We are in, uh, close determination for executive session. I'll be out in a moment.
Backing to our reading session at this time, board do you take action to move to the next section? Now we're going to move on to item number thirteen, discussion of the audit findings and approval. Uh, what I'm really looking, uh, we'll make a, I'm requesting a motion. Uh, requesting a motion. For discussion and or approval of the audit findings. That does if you do want a formal exit conference. Or request, do not want a form. If you request a formal exit conference or do not request a formal exit conference. When you make your motion, please make the motion stating your choice.
Make sure I understand what you just said. No, 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 I wanna make sure I understand what you're saying. You're requesting a motion as to whether or not we as a board would like to have a, um, formal or informal exit.
Yes, sir.
Audit. Or audit, okay. Well, I move that we, I move that we go with it and I move that we go with an informal audit exit.
Well, how would we move forward to have, if we had questions for Holly?
Well, you can, you can speak with Holly.
This is informal without informal, okay. Yeah. Let's see how we need to move, get her opinion on how we move forward.
Okay.
Now, will there be another follow-up from the auditor about what Holly submitted?
Yes, we'll, we'll get a response back from her based on her response to them.
She's in the process now of responding and what they want to know is if we want it informal or formal. And what he made a motion for is to do with Mr. Sparks, I'm sorry, made a motion for it to be informal, but with our business administrator explaining it to the board.
That's right.
Y'all can always.
Just informal. She can talk to us about it and we don't know the findings, so it's whatever the findings are, I can read them myself. We'll be able to say, okay, all right, it's things that we need to look at, obviously need to look at. So it's sort of like a self-evaluation process instead of the auditors coming in formally, sitting down telling us their thoughts because from the way it appears, when I talked with Ms. Rogers and she was just giving me an overall, she's not sometimes auditors. You don't see a clear picture unless you're right there. When you're standing on the outside looking in, you're going strictly by what's on your checklist and what you've been trying, whereas there may be some more in-depth explanations in it as to why. All clear understanding. So if you understand, say, for example, me, if I did something here that I knew and he knew that I knew better than, then I shouldn't really need a formal evaluation.
What they do, they didn't do, I don't think it was, I'm almost sure it wasn't a hundred percent audit. A percentage where they just pulled different items. But whatever they pulled, they have a measuring tool that goes along with to tell if it was the way it should have, if it wasn't, so, and I'll be honest, I think if you did a formal, you can't go, it can't be a back and forth with the audit. And I don't want to, I definitely don't want us to get to that point with it. And, and, and some of the things that they have in there might get to that point. But Holly, we can do that.
We can ask some questions.
I would, I would say if anybody want to just have special call.
That way everybody gets the same advice.
Openly, it's probably openly, but, but they don't cut my special call, we can do it.
That's fine, because it's probably dollars.
All right, so Ms. Rogers, so right now, the motion is, is noted. Mr. Sparks made the motion, was it second?
Oh, second.
Second, Ms. Young. Any other discussion? The motion passes, so we will do an informal exit conference. So this is what we need to. So looking forward, is this one that I need to, I sort of printed my own out, you want to use?
She got one for me. I read it online, she got one for me. No, I printed it home, I'm just, I'm just joking her. I'm just joking her. I printed it out. I read it already. I'm gonna need to print it for my meeting now.
Well, thank you all very much in requesting a motion to adjourn. The motion you made, I'd like to make. I'll make the second.
He thought he couldn't get that.
All in favor?
He's had his head around it.